I call it order, the May 23 meeting of the Clive City Council with clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Edwards.
Here.
Councilmembers Klein.
Here.
McCoy.
Here.
Judkins.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Micklini.
Here with time to spare.
If you all would rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next up, we have the approval of the agenda. I'm not worried changes.
Reproval, second.
Motion, second, approve the agenda. Further discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose nay, that is approved. Next, we have a proclamation for National Gun Violence Awareness Day on June 7. I'll refer you to the text in the packet that outlines all the considerations and reasons why we are declaring that. And so let me just get to the official part of that where I declare that the first Friday in June, which is June 7, will be National Gun Violence Day in Clive. We encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. So we've declared that to be June 7. And we've got some guests here, they're wearing orange, and I think you're encouraging folks to wear orange on June 7 as well. Is that correct? Thank you very much. Anything from the council? If not, we'll move on to citizens' presentation. And that's the opportunity for anyone to present an item to the council that is not on the agenda. If you are in the council chambers and wish to address the council, please approach the podium. And Pete, if you would check and see if there's anyone online. And while Pete does that, I'll remind everyone present tonight that we follow the pillars of character counts endeavoring at all times to promote and model the principles of character counts. That is trustworthiness, respect, responsibility, fairness, caring, and citizenship. And we expect everyone here tonight to follow those principles. Pete, do we have anyone?
No, your honor.
And I see no one coming forward, so we'll move on to consent.
Reproval, second.
Motion, second, on consent, further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? Spencer's killing it, though. And that passed by a vote of five to zero. Next up, we have new HR administrative specialist, Liz.
So I'm happy to welcome Cindy House. She's our new administrative specialist in the HR department. Cindy is a consultant of HR, does that part-time as she moved from Colorado. She worked for the town of Silverthorne, and before that, she worked for a hospital in Kremling called Middle Park Health. So this is Cindy. Hi.
Cindy, welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. I'm very excited.
Is this your first time in Iowa?
No, actually, I grew up here and I moved away in my early twenties and I moved out to Colorado and I found myself an empty nester. And my folks have a farm over in Jamaica. They have goats also. Does not mean I want to take care of the goats here, though.
You can.
You can. No, no. And I came, I came back to help my folks. They were going through some health stuff. And like I said, I'm, I'm an empty nester. I have a son in college on the East Coast, and then I have a son in Steamboat Springs. And I'm like, well, I'll come home.
Welcome. We're glad you're back in Iowa, and in Clive in particular.
I'm very excited about it. Thank you all very much.
Welcome, welcome. Thanks, Liz.
Have a good night.
And Richard, you have an introduction as well.
Thank you. Tonight, I'm pleased to introduce Alyssa Welling as the new Leisure Services Administrative Assistant. She will be starting on June 10 and comes to us from a similar position at West Des Moines Community Schools. So Alyssa.
Thank you.
You don't have to give, give a big speech.
I wasn't going, sorry.
Couldn't even give any speech.
She just did a really good job, so I was like, oh, gosh. Yeah, I know.
Well, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you.
So happy to have you on board.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Richard. Next up, we have Capital Crossroads, and I think Toby and Matt are here.
Yes, thank you, your honor. I'll introduce our speakers briefly. Housing, as you know, is an issue that comes up and has been with our community for many, many years and regionally as well. So tonight, after some preliminary conversations with our friends at Capital Crossroads, Polk County Housing Trust and AARP, we thought this would be a good time to sort of circle back and get an update on the status of the number of initiatives and start talking about what some potential next steps could be for the city of Clive. So tonight, we have with us Toby O'Berry and Matt Howgie from Polk County Housing Trust and Brad Anderson from AARP. Yep. I'll get you started here. Thank you. Well, hello, everyone. Thank you for giving us the time and inviting us to come talk a little bit about Capital Crossroads. So I'm Toby O'Berry, the executive director of the Polk County Housing Trust Fund. And I'm going to just share a little bit about Capital Crossroads and then turn it over to my colleague Matt and Brad. And they're going to talk a little bit about some initiatives that specifically we're interested in kind of having some dialogue and conversation around with you guys. So Capital Crossroads, we're in our kind of third iteration. Katie Pageant has been hired as the executive director for Capital Crossroads. Really excited to have her on board and her leadership. I'm not going to go through all the slides and all the individuals who are part of it. I'm on the governance committee. But just know that two of the initiatives for Capital Crossroads that we're going to focus on over this next two-year time period is education and workforce housing. And so we're going to talk a little bit about the workforce housing piece of it. There are kind of three strategies and initiatives that we want to look at within workforce housing. One of them is preservation and also kind of the inventory analysis of workforce housing. If you think about kind of what that looks like, we've done a lot of needs assessments, but we haven't taken every city in the region and looked at what are the number of units that we have in Clive? And of those units, what's the area median income that those units are locked in at? And then also, how long is that affordability in place? So that's the preservation part. So when does it expire? So we can be proactive in every community around the number of units that we can create, but also the number that we can preserve. So that kind of counting and inventory is a big piece. And then the second piece is land and zoning reforms. And that's really something that we'll talk a little bit more about today. But it is a big piece that we want to increase the supply of affordable housing in all of our communities. And that's kind of zoning and land use reform is one piece that we want to really look at. And really, when you look at Capital Crossroads, it's only as strong as all the communities that are involved. And we really need the entire region, every city in all of the communities that we're looking at, to be at the table. And so we really want Clive to be at this table. It's very important to have the suburbs at the table. And it's something that I'm very passionate about and something that we will be reaching out to you. And we would love to have you and need you at the table for Capital Crossroads. And that third piece is economic development incentives. And so it's really looking at how can we streamline from within the whole region? What does that economic development incentive look like for those developers? And for how we can kind of standardize what that looks like across the entire region. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brad, and he's going to talk a little bit, and then Matt will finish up. Thank you.
Thank you, Toby. So my name is Brad Anderson. I'm the state director for AARP here in Iowa. We have 330,000 members, including 3,200 members here in Clive. So one of the things that we're talking about today are accessory dwelling units. And I don't know if, I assume everyone is familiar with that. For those listening, these are also known as carriage houses or granny flats, but we don't, we don't love the term granny flats, of course, at AARP. So there are two primary reasons that AARP are nationwide advocates for accessory dwelling units. Number one is kind of what Toby mentioned, which is affordable housing. And obviously, for the 50-plus population, especially those primarily 65-plus on a fixed income, it is getting harder and harder to afford housing everywhere across the country, including here in Iowa. So accessory dwelling units are an affordable housing option. Secondly, is caregiving. And in my view, this is an even more urgent need because we ask, we do a ton of polling at AARP, and we always ask the question, how do you want to see, how do you want to receive care as you age? Nearly unanimously, it is we want to stay in our homes as long as possible. We want to stay in our communities, and we want to stay close to our families. Accessory dwelling units, making it easy to build an accessory dwelling unit provides that option. We don't have to remember back too far to remember the pandemic. And thousands of Iowans were stuck in a nursing home for months on end, not able to communicate or even touch their loved ones. And it was a real crisis. And so we want to avoid that to the extent possible moving forward. And that's why we're big proponents of accessory dwelling units. The last thing I'll say is we are, we have issue expertise. I know Matt is going to pump us up. He loves AARP, and I'm grateful for Matt. He's our biggest cheerleader. I do have copies, and I don't know how you all want to do this, but I do have copies of, this is, this is the gold standard when it comes to information about accessory dwelling units. It's called the ABCs of ADUs. And it's a very user-friendly guide to walk you through what an ADU is, how it's used, and possibly some sample ordinances for you to take a look at as you're considering this. So now I'll turn it over to Matt.
Well, thank you, Brad. Good evening, your honor, members of council, friends on staff. Doug is here. Hello, Doug. I want to say thank you to Clive for the participation that we've enjoyed from your beautiful community so far in the Capital Crossroads process. As you know, it's been around for a minute. I remember we were on our regional talk and mainly listening tour. This was one of the first communities that we visited as we started our regional sojourn a couple of years ago. Doug was one of the first folks on city staff to mention to us a housing term called gentle density, which is the concept of allowing some flexibility in land use selectively in neighborhoods that adds new choices for homeowners, adds options and flexibility, but in a way that is respectful of neighborhood character and quality of life. That really is why our residents come and choose to live in a community like this. And so ADUs and missing middle housing are both kind of broad terms for ways that cities can provide this kind of flexibility. And we're so happy that, for example, last year, we hosted a gentleman who works for Opticos, which is a national planning and design firm here to have a conversation about missing middle housing. And we held kind of a planner roundtable and had some representation from Clive at that event, being able to hear from you all. Your honor, we had some conversations about this issue at that time. And, and then again, at this year's Affordable Housing Symposium, which was just last month downtown, there were several folks from Clive there. So thank you for attending and for being part of that conversation. Councilperson Weaver, I was asked to call you out in a good way by our friend and colleague Stephanie Murphy from the Neighborhood Finance Corporation. You've had, I think, numerous conversations with Stephanie. Housing is a broad and multifaceted issue. And, and as you know, Clive has been working very hard on your first ward plan, kind of for the eastern portion of the community, which is a great plan. When Toby talks about housing preservation, put a pin in that. We're going to come back and talk to you about housing preservation issues in that part of the community. There are some multifamily properties that are very important to the region there. But in addition to that, you know, as you're thinking about strategies for revitalizing that, you know, the age of housing in your community is really starting to cross over 50 years. And I didn't bring my alarming map showing the red line drawn through the western suburbs of where housing is, you know, built pre-1970. But you know, all of us need a little bit of work to age gracefully sometimes, and housing is, is part of that. And so there are strategies like Neighborhood Finance Corporation. I know you're thinking about here in surrounding communities are, are engaging in those same conversations. We have similar conversations with Urbendale and West Des Moines and Windsor Heights as well, where the time progresses, things change, the need for a new housing conversation takes place. So we're here tonight to speak about one portion of that, which is the accessory dwelling unit portion. I believe in your packet, you had a copy of the handout. In the later part of last year, I had the honor and privilege of reaching out to metro cities around greater Des Moines. You know, gosh, guys, this happens sometimes. The city of Des Moines liberalized its ADU policy in 2022, and Brad worked hard on that, and it was a good move. And we all said, yay, good job. And then we turned to each other at the office and said, someone had better check in with the other communities about what their current status is on ADUs too, because we don't want you to feel left out, do we? So we got on the phone or sent out a form stack, actually, and just asked communities to tell us some, some items about their current status on ADU policy because we wanted to know what was out there. We found a large portion of Ankeny Zone with duplexes allowed by right, making them actually kind of a low-key, extremely friendly ADU city and things like that that kind of surprised us a little bit. And so on the back of the handout or on the second page, there are some trends in local policies that we discovered about ADU policy across the region. And very, very briefly, I'm just going to highlight those. First of all, you can see on the picture there, that's a sample ADU that was built in the Oak Park neighborhood of Des Moines by the nonprofit Home, Inc. That is kind of right off of Euclid Avenue at about 10th Street in Des Moines. We shot a video series about the construction of that ADU, including an interior tour. And if you go with that QR code, you can do that for the rest of my talk. I won't mind. Just go with your phone right now. You can see the YouTube video, and you can just tune out. I'll keep talking, and you can watch the tour of that ADU. Because you can see what one looks like attached to a garage behind a home. Because people are wondering, you know, what is one? What does it look like? And that's an opportunity to see inside one that was recently built in Des Moines under their new policy. Okay? Basically, it's a smaller house that shares a lot with a larger single-family home. And across our region, in communities that allow ADUs, the size of the ADU is usually restricted by ordinance. And restrictions vary between about 600 square feet, which is a small apartment kind of size, up to about 1,200 square feet. Generally, ordinance is called for the ADU to be smaller than the main house that it shares a lot with. Second, ADUs come in all shapes and sizes. So they can be separate, sandalwood structures in a backyard. They can be above or attached to a garage. In some communities, they're allowed to be attached to or part of a main residence. For example, a third floor or an attic or above a garage that's attached to the house. And those, those rules kind of vary a little bit. You may be required to build the ADU in an architectural style that is similar to the house that it shares a lot with or similar to the neighborhood where it's located in terms of design standards. Several communities say they'll allow shared utility connections between the main house and the ADU. We're still digging into some of our utilities companies' opinions on that and how that all shakes out in the regulations, just to make sure there aren't any interconnection issues that come up. So obviously, we encourage cities to talk about that with utilities. Typically, off-street parking currently is required in ADU ordinances. The most common standard is one extra space. And then ADUs can often be rented, but cities may require a rental certificate if the ADU is to be used for a rental purpose. And they may have a requirement that either the main home or the ADU remains owner-occupied. And those policies also vary a little bit. When you're considering an ADU policy for your community, there are really two steps in the process, in my opinion. The first step is just an ordinance to enable ADUs in the first place. And we know that here in Clive, you have some beautiful homes that have pool houses near them, which may have basically the full features of a dwelling unit. So they may have a complete kitchen and a space that could be used for sleeping and this kind of thing. But they're not maybe classified or recognized in your code as accessory dwelling units. And that's something I would encourage you to consider because it turns out that in the world of mortgage financing and just understanding real estate, we always encourage folks to have clear regulatory rules of the road for what types of housing are in your communities, so that our colleagues in the, in the kind of finance industry can wrap their heads around how to qualify people for loans, if someone's going to rent an ADU. Can that rental income count toward qualifying them for a mortgage, things of this type? And you can help make those rules of the road clear in your community by passing an enabling ordinance for ADUs that, that sets out the basic expectations you wish to have. Now, I said this is a two-step process, and I said that because sometimes a wily housing advocate may return to your community after you have passed the enabling ordinance. And we may ask you to consider, for example, if you, if you chose to require two off-street parking spaces or one off-street parking, we may be tempted to encourage you to not have any off-street parking requirements of things of this nature. It's important to say we can always do more to enable ADU policy. And in fact, in other parts of the country, things like allowing ADUs to be rented and reducing off-street parking requirements are kind of key to seeing large numbers of ADUs built. If you choose a more restrictive policy, which is your right to do, you will not expect to see a huge number of these structures come through over the building permit desk. Do you understand that? That's just, it's not likely to be a torrent of applications. But they can still be a very meaningful option and choice for homeowners that are talking about uses like Brad outlined, caring for loved ones and this kind of thing. So whatever you choose to do, as a regional, proud regional bureaucrat, I would humbly request that you just track it carefully. So within your building and permitting system, make sure that the ADU permit type is set apart so that we'll be able to evaluate and see, and you'll be able to see, you know, how many requests are we getting for this type of housing? How many permits are we issuing and that kind of thing? And then you'll have a better idea of what's evolving in your community over time if you create some of that data tracking to follow what your policy is doing out there. We did provide to the community earlier, but I brought it here because I love to hold up aids. This is the technical version of the ADU survey responses, which is just kind of the raw feedback that participating cities gave. We have copies of it here tonight, but we've already sent it to your community. And I also brought, because I never go anywhere without it, my copy of the AARP model ordinance for state and local ADU regulation, which does go through in great detail all of the different policy options and considerations. It is recognized by housing advocates as the nation's best model ordinance. So it will go through the options and choices. It's an aid to staff. You have an outstanding staff here, but everybody can always use a high-level perspective sometimes. So, you know, tonight we focused on ADUs. You can tell we're excited to come back and focus on other issues. But obviously, we're respectful of your time and be happy to entertain any questions.
I don't have a question. I just, some comments. I'm a big fan of ADUs. I, I think they're a tremendous opportunity for us in the future, and I'm very hopeful that we're going to move in that direction. And it's not just the big houses with the pool, right? We've got, we've got some big lots on the east side of our town that where ADUs would fit perfectly, right? And so I think, I think it's a great opportunity. And also, as a realtor, I can tell you it's going to add some value to those homes as well. And, and as a realtor, I'm excited to see more of those in our market, so.
Absolutely.
I'm a big fan of them.
Thanks, David. Any other comments, questions?
I have one.
Oh, go ahead, Susan.
I can see so many upsides. I'm excited about it too. But I'd be interested in hearing any downsides, you know, that communities have experienced, things to prepare for.
Yeah, you know, first of all, we're always cautious to advise that there is no one solution to housing difficulties. So we're very concerned, obviously. I worry every day about housing affordability. ADUs still have a cost to homeowners to build them. And the cost of an ADU, if it's integrated into the home, can be $50,000 or $75,000, depending on how much reconfiguration has to happen, up to 150, really up from there in terms of options that people would choose. So in terms of their affordability benefits, it's not a perfect panacea, but it allows more housing to be built, which I think is really important. Some of the, some of the ups and downs of ADUs can come from some of the regulatory choices that cities make and how they integrate with your zoning code. And really, a lot of those can be mitigated just by having a careful conversation about that as council. Downsides to ADUs, gosh, I think, you know, in Iowa, we continue to see this whole climate evolving. So we're still out there trying to get contractors and folks familiar with ADUs. One of the challenges for homeowners is this is an interest, it's going to be a big project for homeowners. And so they have to kind of think of themselves as a housing developer and kind of put on a hard hat and get out a framing square, you know, and think about the financing of this, and it can be kind of complicated for homeowners to do. And, and cities can help overcome that by really taking some effort to do some good public engagement or public programming about the specific details of your ordinances. You see, developers will come and stand at your permit counter all the time, and they are very informed about how to dialogue with city officials about getting a permit for, you know, building something. But homeowners don't have that expertise often. And so there will need to be some extra support from city staff to make sure that your expectations are clear, they're easy to understand and find, and that those homeowners are going to be able to, you know, not kind of feel like they're running into a wall of red tape if they choose to take this on. Those would be some of the things that come to mind.
Can I add to that? I could see some potential challenges if we're dealing with rentals, right? You live in a nice, quiet neighborhood, and now I'm going to put up an ADU and I'm going to Airbnb it. And now I've got people coming in from out of town or having parties or what have you. So not that it can't be overcome, but I can see those types of challenges coming with stuff like that.
And certainly nuisance ordinance and residential rental code and certificates and so forth. These are all, as you know, very aligned. Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you all for being here.
Thank you all for the opportunity to come.
Well, now moving to the action items. First up is a public hearing on budget amendment number two. Did we publish the appropriate public notice?
Yes, your honor. It was, it was published in the Des Moines Register on May 3, 2024.
Thank you, Liz.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and City Council. This is the second amendment to our budget for fiscal year '24, which was proposed and adopted 18 months ago. I provided a copy of the notice of publication in your packet, and I also outlined the overall amendments in the memo. No changes have been made since we've set the public hearing, nor have we had any public comment. So I would, we would recommend approval.
Any further discussion of the matter?
I'll move resolution.
No. Moving to close the public hearing, that's what Mr. Weaver said, and I'll second him.
That's what I meant.
Well, thank you very much. So the motion is to close the public hearing. Further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote to close the public hearing? Something to have to interpret for Mr. Weaver.
Thank you. I'm a rookie still.
Sir, please post that vote. Okay, we have closed the public hearing now.
I'll move a resolution approving the budget amendment number two.
Second. Motion, second, on the resolution, further discussion, seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And for those that are assembled here, we are getting a new voting system. There is one coming. Manual, right? Yes. No. This is the second time I'm voting, if that's okay. Vote early and often, is what they say in my neighborhood.
Matthew, did mine attempt to, because I had another one pop up.
Yeah, I had two. Third time's a charm.
Ah, yes, and it passes by to zero. Thank you all. Doug, I think you've got a site plan to tell us about.
Thank you. For you tonight is a request for site plan approval for a tunnel car wash that will be located at 15451 Hickman Road. Generally, it is at the northeast corner of 156th Street and Hickman Road, as shown on the exhibit here. We have outlined the proposed parcel in the red. If you recall, the property owner, Midwest Fidelity Partners, has been before you folks previously to request, to request a rezoning of this property. The overall property, approximately four acres for commercial purposes. They have also come before you for consideration of a preliminary plat to allow for this approximately four-and-a-half acre parcel to be divided into three commercial lots. And for you tonight, they are requesting approval for a site plan for the tunnel car wash on the middle of the three parcels that will be developed on this property. The, the request was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 2. It was recommended to you folks for approval unanimously. There was quite a bit of discussion around the site plan. Adjacent property owners have been engaged in the process all the way along the road in terms of rezoning, preliminary plat, and now site plan level. in terms of rezoning, preliminary plat, now site plan level. I'll be happy to dig into any of the particular elements, but I'll try to outline a few of the high points just to get the conversation started. A few of the elements that. A few of the questions and concerns around the site revolved how the site was going to interact with the adjacent parcels. One of the aspects is this particular property, the overall four and a half acres, will be adjacent to both Emerald Drive and the future 154th Street. Although there's streets on two sides of it, we did want to make sure that we are having controlled access onto the public streets to try and avoid having multiple driveway and conflict points out to the public streets. So all the way along the process, both in terms of the adjacent bank building, as well as onto this property, the intent was to have controlled or managed access. As you can see in this illustration, the proposed car wash sits in the middle of the three parcels, but you can start to see the formation of the shared access, both to the north as well as to the east. The car wash is proposing to make the improvements shown on the exhibit. And in the future, the lot to the left and the lot to the right will continue to build out the rest of the roadway infrastructure, potentially working to have a shared connection point with the bank. As you'll recall, when that site plan was approved for the bank itself, the driveways established to support their circulation needs. However, a cross-connection ingress egress easement was a condition of that site plan approval. The bank did authorize or sign that receivable ingress egress easement is of record. And as we have alluded to in the past, as this property develops, and specifically the lot one of this proposed subdivision, there may be a desire and a need to have that connection made to the bank. That would be the opportunity for the developer to utilize that existing ingress egress easement. Alternatively, as that plan comes together, they may be fully satisfied with the other connection points and not feel like that connection is necessary. But with respect to the issue that's before you tonight, that is not really part of the conversation. That easement has been granted as a previous action. And at some point in the future, when that adjacent lot, lot one, is proposed for approval, there'll be an opportunity for conversation and discussion around that access. In terms of the car wash site plan itself, it is a fairly standard suburban commercial development here. Requisite water, sanitary sewer, stormwater management is all being shown as required by the city through its ordinance requirements. The other bit of issue that got into with this particular property was at the time of the rezoning, there were some questions and concerns from the adjacent property to the west regarding if this site was to have a car wash, what could be done to try and mitigate and manage some of the view line issues and potentially noise issues that could come from the car wash? So as you'll recall from the rezoning process, one of the stipulations of that that was included in the zoning change and development agreement was this notion of an enhanced parking setback zone, landscape zone, that stipulated that in the event that lot two has a car wash proposed, that the boundary along the west side of the proposed development would have enhancements physically installed to try and mitigate, again, potential noise and sight distance or sight view issues from the bank building to the west. Specifically required was landscaping and some earth birmingham along that shared boundary. The site plan is demonstrating compliance with that particular requirement through the installation of a series of evergreen trees, some ornamental grasses, and that two to three foot berm. That would be all a part of the requirements and the construction of this lot two. The obligation for the maintenance of the features would be shared between lots one and lot two. However, again, the improvements would be installed at day one, and the easement would establish the responsibilities to maintain it in perpetuity. So from staff's perspective, the site plan that's presented in front of you tonight is compliant with the requirements of that zoning change agreement with respect to that provision. Some of the other questions and concerns that were raised were associated with the building itself.
Doug, before we move off of the landscaping piece.
Sure.
I see that kind of stormwater detention area is what I'm assuming is up, up on the north side. Is that going to include some of that birmingham and landscaping to create kind of a buffer for the, for the residences to the north?
Yes, thank you. Yes, along the north boundary line, because of the residential properties to the north of the subject site, the rezoning required a fifty-foot landscape buffer, similar to what was required when the Iowa Trust and Savings Bank was developed. And if you've been out in that area, you kind of see the application of some earth work along the back of sidewalk. They are proposing kind of a similar situation in which they have then some graded depression for stormwater management, and then layering in trees on both sides of the stormwater basin itself. So as you can kind of see, Emerald Drive sidewalk, small berm, stormwater management, trees, and then evergreen trees in the background. So again, the intent here is to use both space, in this case, fifty feet of required buffer and layering of landscape materials to create that seasonal break to this particular development. Beyond the buffer itself, as you can see, and similar to the bank setup, the buildings themselves are quite a bit south of the minimum building setback line. So everyone is kind of working towards, pushing towards Hickman Road, maximizing that space and the separation to the either existing single-family homes or the future multifamily townhomes that would likely be developed to the north.
Thanks.
The building itself, if you've been out to their development on 100th Street and Hickman Court, the building and programming is identical to that building. So it is kind of a long, narrow building. What has been changed for this particular project is enhancement to the exterior cladding. This particular area in zoning district required a certain amount of masonry, brick masonry. So in this case, there's sixty percent of the exterior facade is, is cladded in brick masonry. The other difference in this particular project is because of some of the questions and concerns for kind of neighborhood character, the applicant has made a change from having the, kind of the entry and exits. So this would be the one facing Hickman, or excuse me, this is the one facing Hickman Road, rather than having their traditional red area along that, that facade, like the 100th Street. They have chosen to utilize a, a brick material. And again, it's kind of a grayish material to try and address some of the concerns of, of having a bright red component in it. They did propose to utilize some red banding on the building and on a small partition on the west face of the building itself. This would be no different than what we've previously approved, for example, with the come and go just across the street, where it's principally a, a brown building, but then has kind of an enhanced red architectural feature at the entrance. So the principal part of it is masonry in an earth tone color. And then they've chosen to use some, some red coloring to create some accents.
Zoning difference between this one and their other one on 100th Street? Why, why the big difference in the exterior?
Sure. So the property at 100th Street is Zone C2. Again, for those that are familiar with zoning history in the city of Clive, C2 was one of the original zoning classifications for the city, and frankly, has very little in terms of requirements. It's a very broad community commercial that served the city's needs for many years as it developed westwardly. Once you kind of got to cross the interstate, the city chose to create additional zoning classifications that had additional requirements, design-wise. And in this particular case, the C4 Zone District comes with a requirement of sixty percent minimum masonry. So again, they have shown a site plan that is in compliance with the city's requirements. There were a few other questions and concerns as the plan has worked its way through the process. Many of them are associated with the operations of the facility and less with the actual site design and layout. The one in particular was associated with noise. Again, the city's noise ordinance is what would be the controlling factor. It's not specifically a site plan issue. However, we certainly don't want to be in a position of approving a use and then just being in constant conflict. So in this particular case, the, the applicant has developed a sound study. You folks had seen it previously, but they have demonstrated that the car wash operation should not create noise that is in excess of the standards of the city code. And the exhibit that was shown also did not include some of the additional enhancements that have been made by the applicant to try and mitigate those noises, particularly to the west, the enhanced landscape area along the, the west boundary, as well as the installation of a screening wall around the vacuum equipment. So those two elements should also provide some level of muting of the noise. And then I think the other more important component is in the future, there'll be another building in between this and the bank itself. So that is going to provide the most sound deadening, although at this particular point, there is no, no detail on when that proposed site plan will be before you. But in that interim period of time, the applicant has done what has been requested, which is add the enhancement along the west property line, add the masonry wall to shield the mechanical equipment. There again were some other components around signage and lighting and things of that nature, but I'll only address those if you have specific questions about those. At that point, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
And with respect to the noise and going to the north, to the residential, future residential area there, is it based because of the further southern location of the, the building that you feel comfortable that, that noise will not impact those residents?
Yes, the, the general comfort level is, is coming from the exhibit here. As you can see, those noise levels associated with the opening of the building will have the highest noise, which is intuitive. Staff did spend an afternoon going around to different car washes, tunnel car washes in the metro area with our noise meters at varying distances. And we concur that, you know, what is presented is reasonable. So between the demonstration, the location of the building to the south end of the property, the installation of the buffering in between the building and Emerald Drive, and then ultimately all of the other ancillary noise that's already occurring in this commercial corridor. We do believe that this particular operation will be principally no different than anything else in the area.
Thank you.
Doug, on, on the lighting aspect of that, do you see any problem that, that the lighting plan would affect the, the residential developments north of there or the homes north of there?
The proposed lighting was included in your packet. What is proposed to be utilized with the site plan is very typical commercial light fixtures. These would be a maximum of twenty-five feet in height, and they're LED lights. So the, the lighting itself is a little bit different. But again, it would be very similar to what the bank has done and very similar to what you would see in other commercial applications, pole lights. And in this case, a small amount of lighting on the building. But the pole lights would be kind of the most bright of the components in the area. And they are utilizing components within the lighting system to try and minimize light spill from the property itself. So again, we would see this as being no different than any other commercial development in the area.
Other questions for Doug?
The signage that's outside of the tunnel entrance, I think you had it on one of the elevations. Is, is, yeah, is that lighted, the silver car wash logo on each side? Do you know?
I believe that those are internally lit signs, yes.
On both sides or just the?
I, I don't know. We don't have a submittal for this particular one, but just in reference to what was installed on Hickman Road, those are both internally lit, like, signs.
Be, be good to know if that's been taken into account for that, you know, dampening light spillage and all the, you know, similar type of.
Yes.
Especially if it's, the reason why I'm saying that is if that, the, the red part, the silver car wash part is lighted red, that might catch the eye more than just a standard, you know, white or yellow fixture.
I, I think that's true. Certainly something that we can have some conversations with the applicant as they get into the part where they're actually processing for sign, sign permits. What's shown here is just for example purposes. But there are opportunities and certainly have been done in other projects where either dimmers have been used to make sure that the light levels can be dialed down if necessary. Or in this particular case, maybe there's an opportunity to simply have the lights turn off at a certain period of time when they're not in operations on that north face. Or again, maybe there's a possibility where this north-facing sign doesn't have to have lighting at all. But we can explore those with the applicant itself as they work through the sign permit process.
But Doug, on that point though, once we're in the signs permitting process, that fairly cookie cutter that you meet this standard and you can do what you want, so wouldn't now be the time to tackle this with their acceptance ahead of time before we find that we have no ability to tackle it in a sign ordinance?
I, I suspect the applicant's more than happy to have that conversation with you folks. The staff position on that is our zoning ordinance does not require.
Right.
The signs to either be dimmed or turned off or so forth. So it would be part of the process if, if that needs to be a condition of approval. That can certainly be something that's discussed. But from a staff level perspective, alternatively to that, it would simply be us working with the applicant to achieve the, the best outcome.
And I don't doubt you can, but I think there, there's a little bit more ability to do it now, if that's what you're after, than to wait for a sign permit, because then it's, they follow the rules in the sign permit, they follow the rules, the lights will be as bright as they want.
It's a really good point for the north side, right? And protecting those residents, the future residents. So it's a good point.
If there are no further questions for us, the applicant is here and certainly can address any specific questions and potentially sign. I do think we also have some folks that may continue to have some questions and concerns about the site. And then I think also you have correspondence from Iowa Trust and Savings Bank that should be entered into the record with respect to their objection to the site plan itself.
But procedurally, why don't we? But procedurally, why don't we go ahead and get that into the record? So you have before you that letter from the Dixon and Bradshaw Law Firm attorney. So I think all we need is a simple motion to receive and file.
Second.
Motion second to receive and file, further discussion. Seeing none with the council, please vote. And with the clerk then post that.
You just waiting for me? Okay, I've been refreshing over and over, so I don't know. Yes.
So that objection has been received and filed by vote of five to zero. All right, Doug, we'll turn it over to the applicant. Thank you.
Good evening. Joel Templeman with the Little Somali Law Firm, 505 Fifth Avenue in Des Moines. Here this evening on behalf of the applicant, Midwest Fidelity Partners. I have several representatives with me tonight from the applicant. First of all, I'd like to thank staff and the council for all your time and attention to this matter. I know we've been here several times on various steps along the way. We appreciate your time. So I wanted to start with that. We have obviously reviewed staff's report and recommendation, and we agree with its contents. We agree with the presentation from Doug this evening. Just to address one of the questions regarding lighting, the wall signage on the north face of that building is not lit. And so when we can, we can speak more to that, but the, the one facing Hickman will be lit. But what I'd really like to do is reserve time. I want to, I know I have five minutes. I'd like to at least reserve the remainder of my time to address any issues that may be raised by other presentations tonight. But we're agreed, we would agree with the staff recommendation for approval. We'd ask that you vote in that manner this evening and approve our site plan.
Anyway, go ahead. I, I suppose while you're up here, let me just grab a couple out of the, of the bank's points here, and I think they're valid. And I believe we've talked about them, but requiring a clear, reasonable limitation of hours of operations. I think you've all agreed to the hours of operation, correct?
Yeah, what are, are summer hours are?
Yeah, summer hours, 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Winter hours, 8:00 AM to 7:00. Those are standard at all seconds.
Oh, you'd, you repeat that on the mic, so it's recorded.
Summer hours are?
8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
8:00 AM to 8:00 PM, and then the winter hours are 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM.
And so I, I mean, to me, that's reasonable. Whether we need that in some kind of writing form or something for people to, you know, adhere to is reasonable. And I bring that up because I think, you know, we've had a tire company that swears they won't have cars overnight on the weekends. And yet we slowly became to have cars in the lot over the weekends. And so though they do a pretty darn good job policing it, it's happening. And so I think that could be cleared up if we could. That'd go a long way. The prohibited, the temporary canopy tents, inflatables, the inflatables thing kills me. You know, I see the noodle hands and that I agree with, nobody needs that as their neighbor. But I think we take care of that in our signage ordinance, although the bank would have to turn you in on a Saturday because we don't police it on Saturdays. So we'd have to encourage the bank or the neighbor to turn those in every time so we know, right? The signs from all windows and doors, I think that's an unreasonable request personally. But the exterior speakers, I do think it's a reasonable request. I mean, I can see the speakers in the vacuum area, the drying area have been to one, right? Pumping out some music and though it doesn't probably hit ordinance level as your neighbor, it's not friendly, but have we dealt with those or no?
I don't know if we've addressed that or not. TJ Nelson.
Yeah.
Good evening, Council. TJ Nelson with MFP. Regarding the sound, we don't, we're not putting the speakers in, we're not be piping sound, so that's not a concern. As far as the canopy is temporary signage, there's a city ordinance that allows it only certain days. We don't do that at our operations, so we don't tend to do that. We'll follow quite with the city ordinance there as well.
Perfect.
So.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
And then just one question, I guess procedurally, if we're, I know the Attorney Brunner's letter was added to the record. I want to make sure that there was an email response from Doug Olandike to Ben Brunner responding to an email that he had sent previously. I want to make sure that that's part of the record as well.
Wow, that was as vague as it comes.
I can give you the dates. I, yeah, it was. No, I'll give you the exact date.
Five minutes is almost up.
I wasn't talking the whole time.
That was a general reminder from legal counsel that I don't want to be here all night, so you're welcome.
Understood. I have my timer going as well.
You're fine. I did note your three questions though, so I'm sure there's a limit, right?
Not with us.
Okay, so the, so the, the email that I'm referring to was sent yesterday, May 22nd, from Doug Olandike to Ben Brunner at 3:27 PM.
Matthew, I don't think we grabbed that one, did we? Yeah.
It was shared with the council, but I don't think it was in the, in the record approval, so we could.
Your honor, it was shared with council by email, but not currently part of the formal records. So perhaps it could, we could move and receive if that's, if that's the council's wish.
Entertainer motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Again, Matthew, can you give me the date, the May 23 response?
22nd at 3:47 PM.
Thank you.
And it was forwarded by me.
Right, and do we have the ability to vote? We do, okay. Well, then with the council, please vote, receive and file.
I motion, I second it.
Thank you.
And would the council please vote and the clerk vote? Please file Doug's this one.
All right, thank you.
And that passes, so that is received and filed. Next up.
Good evening, Mayor Edwards, council members. Kyle Cradeneer on behalf of, from the Sullivan Ward Law Firm at 6601 West Town Parkway, West Des Moines, Iowa, on behalf of Emerald Isle Land Company. And I second what, what Joel said. You know, I appreciate all of the attention that, that every one of you has given this matter. It's been, it's been at least a year by my calculations. But I'm here for, we're here for one simple issue. And we, we, we were resigned to the fact that the car wash is going in. We understand where the council's coming from. You know, we, we understand that it's probably a good use for, for that area, for that lot or for one of those lots. But what we take issue with or what we'd like the council to, to consider is that in the development agreement, you know, Doug was right. I don't take issue with anything Doug said. We said that the enhanced landscaping zone buffer, that the site plan complies with that. I agree with that except for once, one part of it. It calls for an enhanced parking setback of landscape zone of 15 feet. And in the site plan as presented before you, it, it has, it doesn't have a setback. What it has is it has seven and a half feet on one side of the, of the property line and seven and a half feet on the other. So I guess our, our position is, you know, if the, if the council is going to approve the site plan, that's fine. But, but we would just ask that they follow their own development agreement that was approved by you as, as council members back in August.
Any questions? Doug, do you want to respond to that?
Couple of points with respect to this issue. First, I think the email from yesterday kind of outlines the response in terms of the clarification on what this is. As we went through the zoning change and development agreement process associated with the rezoning, that is when the questions and concerns were brought up from the adjacent property owner to the west. Can we do something to help minimize these view lines and potentially mitigate some of the noise concerns? The zoning ordinance in and of itself does not have any specific controls in place to create a, a buffer or setback along two commercial parcels. So to try to mitigate the concerns, staff came up with this interesting idea of an enhanced parking setback landscape zone. It's not a term that's utilized in the zoning ordinance in any place. So it was a customized solution to address some of the specific concerns that were brought up during the rezoning process. Again, the purpose and intent was to create some additional space that would otherwise not be available if we just followed the normal parking requirements. There was no buffer required between two commercial uses. So again, we leveraged that opportunity to have this enhancement along the shared property line in the event that there's a car wash on lot two. The space gave the room to create the berm. Again, that otherwise wouldn't be available if it was just two commercial parking lots. The berm gave the opportunity for the landscape, that newly installed landscape to get as high up as possible to create as much sound deadening and view line distraction as, as it possibly could. So I think the only question is whether or not the entirety of this physical feature should be solely located on lot two. What is being suggested is that it should be all on lot two. Practically speaking, it's in place as proposed by the, by the zoning change agreement. And functionally, whether or not it's split or all on lot two, the physical improvements, the separation, the height of the landscaping, every aspect of it would be identical. So whether or not it's split or all on lot two, the physical improvement will be in the exact horizontal positioning on the geography.
But if you argue, from what I understand, the argument is if you argue 15 feet on the current lot in the development agreement, you could in essence make another 15 foot rule on lot one, acquiring actually even more buffer between parking. So you're not really getting the 15 on one. Maybe that's the argument, maybe I'm confused. Takes me a while to do math, but.
The, the, the requirement of zoning chain was along the shared boundary in the event a car wash is built, 15 foot landscape parking setback enhanced zone that includes these features. The features are shown on the plan. The 15 feet is shown on the plan. It is simply being shared between lots one and lot two with a permanent easement that requires it to be in existence in perpetuity.
The other questions for Doug? Thank you, Doug, for explaining. Anything else?
I, I would just add that, that that's all true. But when you were, when all of you were looking at the development agreement and you were reading through and it said a 15 foot setback, were you envisioning splitting, straddling the property lines? Or were you envisioning that the buffer zone starts at the west property line? And then it goes heads east 15 feet? I guess we're just asking that they, we're not asking that they, that you shut the, the project down. We're just asking that you send them back to present a site plan to you that is in full compliance with the development agreement, whether it's on lot two or lot three.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course.
Look, you, you've been here since the beginning, so have I. There's nobody that has been more outspoken against the car wash than me. Continue to be today, right? Do I think it's the best thing? No. Is it going to happen? Yes. Can, can they do it? Yes, right? I still don't think we need another car wash, however, that's over. But what's the relevance between your argument and your client's property to the north? When we're talking everything to the west, are we just grabbing for something to stop this project? Because I don't see anything how it affects your property to the north on that seven and a half feet to the, to the west.
Right. And so the, the only.
That's the argument, that's fine, it's legit, right?
Yeah, yeah. So that is the thing, it just gets us seven and a half feet further away.
Of what?
Of.
Your property, of just the next property they're going to sell.
Well, I think that, I think that if lot one, I'm not sure where it goes, but if lot where it goes in relation to Emerald Isle, but I think if it would go up, it might move it over a little bit. But practically speaking, we're, we're here, obviously, we've been against the, against the development from the beginning. And, and we believe that, that this failure of them to follow the development agreement is our best legal argument to make them come back and, and present, present a, a site plan that, that's more compliant with the agreement.
What satisfaction, to what end? If you got the 15 feet, I don't get what it does. And maybe I'm, maybe I'm dragging this on too far because I don't see what it gets you. What, what's your ask? Because you, you got to have a different ask than we want to move it seven and a half feet from the west, which doesn't even affect you at all. So what's, if you had your, today, we send them back.
Yep.
Y'all look at that, and I won't have a problem voting that way if it, if it makes sense.
Yep.
But if you send them back, what's?
Best case scenario?
Yeah.
Best case scenario that their design doesn't work on lot two and they have to move it to lot three.
Okay.
Yep.
You got it. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, thank you. What we're asking for tonight is approval of the site plan.
Your honor, I will reiterate my comments in writing that are in the packet. Legal staff has reviewed the arguments throughout the last year, including the most recent objections and all that. Today, we believe that the site plan is legally compliant with the development agreement and endorse the staff's recommendation.
I, I just want to make a quick comment and so I, I'm not sure I completely agree with, with the use, just like Councilmember McCoy was saying. But that's neither here nor there at this point. I do want to just make a quick comment that I do appreciate the, the Midwest Fidelity's willingness to, to answer our questions, be responsive, make changes to, you know, try to mitigate the, the concerns that neighborhood properties have raised. So I, I just want to make that comment.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the site plan?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second to approve the site plan, further discussion.
And your honor, I will be abstaining.
Thank you. Would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And the site plan is approved by four affirmative votes and one abstention. Thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, Jim, we've got traffic signals, I think.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight, to address a couple outstanding issues related to the Berkshire and Waco traffic signalization project specifically related to the final assessment. This joint project with the city of Waukees constructed median improvements and installed traffic signals at the intersection last construction season. As a reminder, the benefit, benefited properties included in the assessment schedule are the 20 commercial properties located north of the intersection in Berkshire Commons Office Plats, Office Park Plats one and two. The preliminary assessments for this project were approved in the fall of 2021. And the estimate there for per property assessment was just over $16,000. At the completion of construction last year, and after eliminating contingencies included in that original estimate and applying some grant funding, the final assessments were reduced to just under $13,000. All the supporting documentation and math on that is included in the assessment plat and schedule in your, in your packet. So a couple actions tonight to wrap this up would be a resolution accepting the work and a resolution leveling, levying those final assessments. If you have to answer any questions.
Questions for Jim?
Real quick, and Jim, can you remind me, did we notify each of these property owners with the original assessment amount?
I believe so, yes. That's part of the process that's laid out with our bond counsel.
So when they receive this, it should actually be a surprise, like a pleasant surprise kind of thing.
I mean, they're still getting assessed, but yes, it's lower than it's lower than what was originally proposed.
But it's assessment.
It is lower than what was originally proposed.
The first letter was saying I'm gonna kick ya. The second one is the kicking.
But I think it's an important it's an important point because what we shared with them originally would be the maximum.
Right.
We can't go above that.
Right.
And so.
But just want to make sure there's communication that's going.
That it's already happened.
There's required communication.
This isn't going to be a surprise.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Correct.
Is there communication that this is your assessment? So can we take the opportunity to say? You may recall.
Well, there's legal requirements. So we work with the city clerk. There's publications that's required and then a formal mailing that's going out. As far as the actual wording on that, I'm not sure.
I think that's fair. If I already got a letter that said sixteen thousand and you're now sending me one for twelve thousand. Why? I'd still say why. And it'd be our opportunity to explain that. It would be a plus, I think, a win for the.
I agree. I think we can indicate in the mailing that this was originally started in 2021, especially if any of the properties had changed hands between now and then.
And if you have.
Has there has there been?
Yeah.
Been a couple, yeah.
Oh, so further questions for Jim? Otherwise, we're looking for two different resolutions, one to accept the work.
Move the resolution accepting work covering Hickman Road and Berkshire Parkway, Waco Place Traffic Signalization Project.
Second.
Motion second on the resolution accepting works. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? That passes by a vote of five zero.
With the resolution adopting final assessment schedule for the Hickman Road, Brookshire Parkway, Waco Place Traffic Signalization Project and amending confirming and levying the assessments.
Second.
Motion second on adopting the final assessment schedule. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? And that passes by a vote of five zero. Thank you, Jim. Next up, we're looking at Water Main Connection.
Done.
Thank you, Mayor and members of council. I'll try to present this in five minutes or less. See how well I do. So tonight I'm here to present the quotes and recommendations for the Northwest Water Alderleaf Water Main Connection. On February twenty ninth, twenty twenty four, city council approved and executed twenty eight E agreement with the city of Wakeke. To provide emergency water connection between the two communities. Staff have filed the twenty eighty agreement with the Secretary of State and had the wire permit issued from the D N R. On April fifteenth, twenty twenty four, the staff solicited ten different contractors. Four of those contractors came back with quotes. On or before the deadline of April thirtieth, a breakdown of those quotes are included in your packet today. Out of those four, we are recommending to select J and K contracting with the low quote amount of ninety four thousand eight hundred and thirty two dollars.
Forty nine thousand.
Forty nine thousand eight hundred and thirty two dollars. Yeah, better news. Half off. To perform the work, they have done similar work in the city before and staff has no concerns with them being able to complete the work. With that being said, I'd be happy to take any further questions.
Questions to John. Otherwise, what we're looking for is first, resolution awarding plans and specs, approving plans and specs. Number?
Go ahead.
Motion second. To approve plans and specs. Further discussion. Seeing none, would the council please vote? And will the clerk please post that vote? Failed. I'm sorry.
No vote.
How we do it my name, right?
There it is.
That is approved by a vote of five to zero.
Move the resolution awarding contract to J and K contracting L S C for forty nine thousand eight hundred and thirty two. Second.
Motion second. Awarding the contract. Further discussion. Seeing none with council, please vote. And will clerk please post that vote? Need to do a voice vote? It's just. And that passes by a vote of five zero. Thanks, Jim. For the record, that was just under three minutes without the computer stuff. Very good. Good job. Jim? Animal protection. Matt?
Your honor, tonight we have first consideration to propose ordinance eleven forty six. This stems back from last summer. We had a appeal of. A declaration of potentially dangerous dog by the Clive Police Department. And we went through the animal review board process on that appeal, myself and council members Weaver and Michael and Andy were part of that review. Went through that process. The animal review board affirmed the the potentially dangerous dog declaration by the chief. But through that process, we kind of recognized there were some portions of the code that hadn't been updated in quite some time in that particular section of the code. And so since then. We also had some administrative rules that we were talking about with legal counsel in terms of that animal review board. So the chief, myself and legal counsel kind of went through the the ordinance to make some updates to certain sections. And we have that in your packet for you tonight. There's a red line version and a clean version of those ordinance changes. And they'll have the chief kind of go through kind of the sections of those changes and any specific questions that the council may have.
Okay, thank you, Matt. Before you in your packet, I believe you have a red line version of the ordinance. As Matt said, there were three different categories that there were. As we went through this, I felt there were some requirements to the dog owners that were less than reasonable. I wanted to make them a little bit more reasonable. And a lot of legal language cleanup that ordinance obviously hadn't been touched in a long time. And then we wanted to formalize the the animal review process. So the if you want to go page by page, the first page is just. Language cleanup. Not a lot of comment to go with that. In the page two, one of the the biggest changes was if a dog was declared dangerous or potentially dangerous. The ordinance said that if it was going to be in a fenced yard, the fence had to be buried two feet into the ground. Or the animal had to be kept in a cage that had a a concrete or caged floor. Felt that was a little bit unreasonable to in the Midwest to to try to have somebody bury their their fence. But so we took that requirement out and specified the kind of backyard fencing that would be acceptable. And the kind of monitoring of a dog in that backyard, we we felt that if a dog was declared potentially dangerous, that. It was safe enough to have them in the backyard as long as the owner was required to to be watching the dog, monitoring the the animal during that time. The third page, the changes, we added formally the review board appeal.
Real quick, on the previous part about the monitoring the dog in in the backyard. Any concern with like how we how we enforce that, right? Like, I mean, obviously, if the dog escapes, that's relatively easy.
Yes.
Is that really the only?
Hundred percent monitoring would be would be really difficult. If the ordinance would allow that if if we don't have cooperation from the owner, that we could impound the animal with a with a court order. We'd like to. We'd like to avoid that. And generally, we get pretty good cooperation from our owners. We've had a couple incidents come up since then, but we've gotten really good cooperation from our our residents. But there's there's always concern. Yes, it would be safer to take the animal and put them in a cage in the backyard and. A little less humane, though, I thought.
Sounds like it's a reasonable risk, though.
Yeah, that's kind of what we were looking for, a middle reasonable ground, but still to be safe for our residents. Page four, there was we added some more reasonable deadlines before. We said that once the chief of police would make a dangerous or potentially dangerous dog declaration, the owner had three days to appeal. That it was that was a little little tight, we thought. We made it seven. In this last appeal, the owner appealed. Longer than three days later, but we we went ahead and allowed that appeal because we, looking at our own own ordinance, we didn't think that was that was reasonable. The next page, we again, we made more reasonable deadlines. I think this one was for us in 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 making. Determination, give give the the chief of police time to get a report in, a review and make a determination. Sometimes three days is a is a little too short of time. The bottom of that page is just some legal language cleanup. The next page is a lot of language cleanup. Thank you, Nye Master, for all the.
Money we've spent, I mean.
Again, the the next page is language cleanup as well. I don't have any other things specifically to point out unless you see something in the ordinance you would like to ask about.
Chakot and I were talking before the meeting today about, thank goodness you left the squirrel monkey in as an accepted. Dangerous animal. So we were gonna, it was on the brink if we were gonna vote for this.
I thought you were a potential squirrel monkey owner, so we need to leave that in.
I'm gonna have to get rid of my pet jaguar.
But you can keep your squirrel monkey. So further relevant discussion. Your honor, that's relevant. I I'd move that ordinance number one, one, four, six, along with the squirrel monkey, having been considered by the council, be voted on for passage prior to its final adoption.
Second.
Motion in a second for the first reading. Seeing no further discussion, the council please vote.
You know your joke, but this is not a pleasant process.
No, but how does the squirrel monkey get saved? But.
I don't know.
And the clerk, please post the vote as soon as he could. Moving on to the board, Pete.
I just need a moment to compose myself, allow me to think about all of the interesting animals in the last six years that I've had the pleasure of discussing with all of you. A silky chicken, if I remember the silky chicken. Thank you, your honor. So.
Forgot about this.
Excited to announce that there are over seventy people on the Soil Quality Restoration Annual Program list interest list. I am certain we will fill out our roster again. And thank you to our friends at Metro Waste for helping us get all the materials ready to go so that when we are out doing soil quality restoration in September. We'll have a nice, smooth process. We anticipate putting going out for bids here midsummer, just as we did last year. So we can get everybody on board in August and get the applications done in September.
What's our final number looking looking like that, Pete, this year?
It'll depend on how much how much expense we're looking at with the bid. So we do have some increased costs, understandably, for our compost. That's going to drive up the number that but the bid number that we get from our contractors.
Increased cost with Metro Waste, then.
Well, the contractors have their increased costs as well.
Pay for quality.
Pay for quality.
How we how we have last year participants?
Just over eight.
Just over eighty. So we should be somewhere near that, you would think.
Yeah. Second, I'm happy to report that we have our first sort of engagements with with residents interested in our swap grant Stormwater Assistance Program. Grant. This was another output of the Water Resources Master Plan. It's only ten thousand dollars that we're starting with, but. If we get the word out there, especially among the landscaping companies, that when they're working in Clive, they should come touch base with us to see if they can help their customer get a better deal. I think they're going to be able to fill up our dance card. Finally, it's been a busy week responding to residents who have tree debris in their yard. I start by saying we're so so grateful that. In Clive, we don't have the hard situation that so many neighboring communities do where people were injured or killed. Compared to a lot of other communities, too, that just had property damage, ours seems relatively manageable compared to what a lot of other places are seeing. So we dodged a bullet. Again, it's been a busy weather season, and this is one that could have been very, very bad. We want to come alongside everybody the best we can to help them get this tree debris taken care of the right way. After discussion, we decided that with city manager's recommendation. That we would focus efforts on the east side, but we are getting phone calls from folks throughout the city. And so I wanted to give you a brief report on what we've heard over the last couple of days. Special thank you to all of our frontline staff in every building because it's been a lot of phone calls just here at City Hall. Paul and I were at the utility clerks were talking. It was about two hundred phone calls over the last two days. The majority of those phone calls were people asking just is there going to be a collection? And we were happy to tell them then, after we made the decision on yesterday afternoon, that yes, there would be, but it would be focused on the east side where we have seen much more of the tree debris. Much more of that took damage to large trees that are harder for folks to manage using things like the compost weekly pickup that we already have in place. There have been, though, a number of folks on the west side who were calling, hoping that there might be something to help them out with, help them to deal with the debris. With those folks, we've taken the approach of first sort of talking through how the composted program works. Because you can, with you do some cutting up of those branches, you can get them into bundles that are going to work just fine. And that's actually going to be the fastest way to get it gone. Compost, it was picked up on the west side today, Thursday, part of the normal regular pickup. And for folks who want to use that program, who are on the east side of the interstate, they can do that on tomorrow, Friday for that pickup. So that gets things moving in the right direction. That's helped us resolve a number of the cases. There aren't a couple areas in the city, though, on the west side where there were, it seems like there must have been some gust or some older mature trees there. Something that has led to some bigger things coming down. And as we've received those phone calls, I've talked with folks about. What might be in their future. We are staff still talking about what solutions could be. But what I've emphasized with those folks is that we've really got to prioritize east side and the east side pickup is going to take every bit of a week and a half, maybe even two weeks. So if they wait to work with us, assuming we could get something together, it's going to only be after those trees limbs have been in those trunks have been sitting there for multiple weeks. When folks have heard that, they understand, well, maybe my best way to get to good is to either figure out a solution myself or work with a private contractor to get something done. But I've committed to all of them, and I've got about seventeen folks who really wanted to sort of engage with me on that. Is that as we keep making decisions and keep working the program, I'll stay in contact with them. I'm taking a very much of a casework approach with those folks. And some of them, I was I've worked with them, we've been able to use the composted program to get to good. Others have been able to reach out to family and friends to help them get to good. I'm seeing more of those sort of get resolved as people just take a pragmatic approach. The best thing I can tell you all from my extensive conversations, and I think I speak for the staff who's on the frontline as well, is that people are overwhelmingly understanding. That there's trade offs when you make a decision like this. Not easy, but when they hear that we've got crews that had been doing streets work that are going to now be going out and picking up the trees and crews that had been doing parks maintenance work that are now going to go. Go out and do this debris removal, they understand some of the tough calls that you have to make when you have limited time and resources. They also appreciate the follow up that our staff has been giving them with returned phone calls and returned emails and commitments to ongoing conversation. There'll be one or two, I'm sure, that people who are are more frustrated, but we're going to work with those folks as well, keep it civil and keep responding to their questions. As we work through the casework, I'll keep updating all of our staff and you'll see reports in Matt's weekly emails. Happy to take questions.
Questions for Pete?
Final results from the tree sale. How'd that go?
Tree sale. We sold, I will put those were those were in Matt's weekly email last week and we can put them back there again.
Just roughly, roughly.
I think we got about eighty percent of all the trees sold, but hundred percent of all the trees will be utilized. These are species that we're happy to put in other parts of the city parks and in the green belt. The species that we probably will take a harder look at next time will be the river birch. There were. Sorry to bring up a, you know, PTSD when there's a tree turning there.
Thirty seven out of fifty.
Thirty seven out of fifty. Okay, so we ended up with about thirteen there that we were.
River birch was only three out of ten.
So that was our big one. Some of the smaller sort of mid story trees did really well. The the service berry and the red buds both sold out, which is nice. Sometimes a little smaller. Plant, I think.
Swamp white oak was also sold out.
The white oak, yeah. That's going to be a big overstory tree. The other one that didn't was the plan tree. And I think we bumped into that with just a little bit of, oh, that's not a species I immediately recognize. This is one that's native to Iowa and is a big overstory tree. But I think some people just didn't recognize it like they said, oh, I know what a red bud is. I know a service berry. I know what an oak tree was like. But a good start.
Thanks, Pete. Free gun.
A couple of quick updates. So Broadlawn's released a press release saying that they've selected their new CEO. It's Proctor Lurman. He's coming over from Unity Point, so he's he's. Knows Des Moines, has lived here for quite some time, so it should be a pretty easy transition over, hopefully. And hopefully, you know, it should be longstanding since he's he's been here for decades. So no less risk of him moving away like the last. And hopefully, you know, it should be longstanding since he's, he's been here for decades. So no less risk of him moving away like the last. On the DART side. Discussions continue is what I will say as far as reimagine DART. It is going to happen, though, that that much is clear. The one thing I will say is they are, staff is taking input from the commission on kind of re, rethinking what does that reimagine DART process look like to one, save cost, and two, hopefully make it more effective. City of Des Moines is going to undertake their own review as well. It's being done by, I'm blanking on the name of the company all of a sudden, VIA.
VIA, same company that did Ankeny, right?
Yeah. VIA. Did Ankeny, and they, they primarily, they provide point to point transport services. So you don't have to be, you don't have to look too far to kind of know where they're gonna put their recommendations, right? But in any case, that was Des Moines' choice. It's their, you know, it's their funds. You know, I, I still have, it, it was made clear that that would just be for Des Moines' benefit. There wouldn't be any expectation for the DART Commission to adopt those results. So that, that is good, and we'll, you know, I'll make sure that we fight as hard as we can to make sure that is the case if that somebody tries to backslide on that.
The survey went out today to.
Yeah.
Dart survey.
Yep. So the survey, survey went out, and, and that is something that, you know, and I have to go back and look at my, my notes from the meeting. I didn't have them with me. There is going to be a process where we get more council feedback, not just the commissioner. And that's to, the, the idea is to get more buy in from, from everybody. So it's not like, oh, well, you know, he agreed to that, she didn't, or she agreed to that, I didn't. Which is smart. I mean, we've seen that be of problems in the past. But the, the ask is that city manager and the, and the commissioner would work to kind of organize and kind of put together the, the city council's response and the mayor's response as far as from each community. So.
More DART, so we can have more DART meeting.
That's right. Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll set up a Clive DART meeting just for us at some point. It'll, it'll only be like four hours.
Yeah. I think they sent it to every count. I think they sent it.
Oh, did they already send it to every?
Well, I, I received the survey.
And I got it too. Yeah. I think they sent it out. They sent it out to every elected official and city manager separately.
Okay, well, then that's.
And you can fill it out. So I'll have a reminder tomorrow for that, but I just got it this afternoon, I think, or this morning.
Yeah, that's a little bit of a change, because we had talked about coordinating it through the commissioner, so it wasn't as much work for staff, but.
Yeah, it didn't seem like that.
Yeah.
But there is meetings, but they also said in the email that there would be.
Yeah.
A meeting with the commissioner, the alternate and the manager of each community, administrator of each community to, in addition to the survey.
Right. Yeah, that'll, that'll happen. That's like the next step.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so moving along, continue to advise as best we can to keep, keep that cost down and make that resolve as good as it can. And that's it.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, along with the mayor, I attended the kickoff meeting for the steering committee for the city hall renovation. And so that will re-envision this building, its security, what's public facing, things of that nature, as well as this, this room itself. So at some point, you all will probably be pulled in as far as for feedback on what, how you want to see this room and what you like, what you don't like, things of that nature. So those, that's just now kind of initiating. And a lot more to come on that. And then on Monday, Susan, the mayor and I participated in the, the new police chief interviews. So we had fair four very, very good candidates, I believe, and very good interviews. And so information should be coming at some point on, on that, on that decision. So more to come.
Thank you. Four to one down from going down to one, or are you going down to two or?
No, I think it should be down to one. So, but I mean, obviously we gotta go through certain processes first, but.
Yeah, we're, we're still going, receiving background information, and there's some additional steps that candidates have to go through because of the civil service process. And you just approved the civil service list of your consent agenda tonight, so there's some things that have to be done. Your next council meeting is my target to present my recommendation to you, June thirteenth.
Eric.
Quickly, Councilman Judkins, Pete, myself, all attended the Good Des Moines Partnerships DC trip. Pete did a great job setting meetings with our congressional delegation. And Susan and I had a lot of conversations with a lot of people. I really felt it was one of our most more productive trips in a long time. So appreciate everyone's assistance with that. Also this week, Mayor Edwards, Mayor Clark, Mayor Andwig, Mayor Peters. Missed anybody? Got everybody? Presented the petition to Dallas County Board of Supervisors on the expansion from three to five, and they received that. So I guess we'll see what, what comes next with that.
Yeah, they'll, they just received it, and hopefully they'll put it on the agenda here very soon. So we'll have notice on that. It, we may need to do some follow up with them. Some of them don't seem to think there's much need.
I was just gonna ask, how, how was it received?
Well, it was received, but.
Not enthusiastically?
Don't want to read too much into it, but, but again, I think you've seen the letter. I mean, the cities that have asked this to be put on the ballot represent about ninety percent of the voters in Dallas County. So it seems like it ought to be a no brainer.
And there was what, seventeen out of twenty that had signed this, and the other ones just hadn't gotten back?
Yeah.
And so the vast majority of.
Then there can be a referendum, correct, or a?
Yeah.
Well, we have to circulate a petition, get a little over four thousand signatures. We've given them a deadline. If they don't put it, agree to put it on the ballot by then, take action, then we'll have to circulate petition and get four thousand plus signatures. That'd be. And I'm sorry, anything else, Eric?
Nothing else, Mayor.
Follow up with Ted on City Hall. Just quickly, if you have anything that you want us to consider as we meet, be sure to let us know if you're, something you particularly dislike or like. It'd probably be helpful to have it early, early on the process. And I think generally, the space will be more of a multi-function space than it is, than it is now. We'll preserve, you know, the things that we need for the council, but instead of having a fixed podium, we'll have probably one that is movable, movable. Same thing is true where the clerks may be seated, so that it can be used for a number of other different things. Anyway, so if you have feedback, needs, wants, et cetera, be sure to pass that on to us. Central Iowa Water Works had its second meeting. We're proceeding and moving along, and I think it's gonna, we're gonna see great things from that.
The Bravo Finance and Sustainability Committee met last Thursday, and one thing we discussed was staff's recommendation that they, in an effort to raise more funds from next year's gala, shrink the table size from ten to eight and charge the same amount. And in taking some preliminary feedback from the mayor and city manager, it was suggested that we might push back a little bit on the city tables. And if it's going to go to eight, look for more of a reduction than just absorbing the two fewer seats. So if anyone else has any other comments, I thought I'd take them tonight and pass those back to Bravo. And Jots?
And again, I think our perspective is that they should make it easy for elected officials to attend, that it's important for elected officials to be there.
Yeah, that's a good point. And I would say Proctor Lurman served on the Bravo Board for some time, and I was always really impressed, just a great guy. So I think it's good selection.
Michael?
I do not have anything tonight.
Do you have anything to report from your work side of things as far as cleanup or anything?
Yeah, I'll try to keep this short. I do appreciate Clive's, and I was not really involved in it, so, but that they made the decision they did make following the debris management process. And every city has that, every city has agreed to that, and every storm, every city goes their own direction. And it's the most frustrating thing. As City Hall got a hundred and some phone calls, we are now nearing 2,000 phone calls this week at our office. That's an unbelievable number from staff answering and returning phone calls. And we have to then say what every city is doing individually because they're all choosing to go different directions. And I will say, most of that is from elected's pressure, their city managers, to do something different. They come out of the gun with the book in their hand and say, this is what we're following, and then everything goes to the, the wayside. So it makes the message very difficult, and it also makes every city manager's position very hard. I've talked to five of them multiple times over the last two days, and several of them have changed directions two or three times, right? But I get it, and you probably all get it of why, right? But so that's been nice. The support we're getting from Polk County is nice. What probably some of you don't under, don't know is that Metro Waste Authority has a very large footprint. We're in twenty-three counties just west of us. We're also in Fairfield, Mason City, Clear Lake, Port Dodge. And we do take every bit of waste from Greenfield. So we will, are mobbing to deal with, taking an entire village to our landfill, which has been, is, is and will be a very difficult process for us. So kind of where we're at. But I've toured every one of the cities impacted. I would say Clive's east side is one of the heaviest impacted. Johnston has some areas that are very heavy impact as well. Grimes got their own share, but in a little different way. Theirs is on their energy lines and, and some other things. So but overall, we, we were very lucky here. So.
Yep.
Especially, thanks. Yeah. Special thanks to the MWA staff for making sure that when that conversation needed to happen early about how can we all be consistent? They were ready to go with the right information, so it made it very easy for us to use that composted program to help people figure out, oh, this is gonna be my fastest way to get into good.
And, and you know, the, the process does not specify doing over ten inch size material. I do understand why Clive is, makes sense. They have the ability to do it. That's the only variant, variance they made. A West Des Moines that made the same variance, although they went a little different direction. Everything is composted, and then anything over ten inch is the city of Clive, but same outcome.
Our chippers can handle a little bit bigger, so.
Yeah.
And if we do find anything that is a little bit questionable, our, we'll leave it and come back if it's too big for the chipper. That we've, with having one for, that was a, a great investment for us to have one for each crew. Because again, those trippers are gold right now. When you have these events, you know, in 2020, when we had the Durachio, we only had one. And then that resulted in us just picking up the material, bringing it to a singular spot to, to chip it up. Now we'll be able to, and shout out to Briggs too, on the east side of town. They're working with us on their north parking lot, allowing us to stage to drop off, uh, chip material there. So Public Works crews don't have to go all the way back to the facility. So allow us to put it in a spot that's easy for our unloaders to, to pick up a, a later date, but then they don't have, you know, saves us a lot of travel time. And we're switching out trucks on the chippers. So we're gonna try to make it as efficient as a process as we can, and hopefully the weather cooperates, and we've got some severe weather early tomorrow morning too. So knock on wood.
Location of the chips for the public?
Well, what we're gonna do with this one, because our intent is to work with Metro Waste to try to get them out as fast as possible. So we're trying to put them into places that'll be easy to load. Public Works facility and, and Briggs is kind of our east side locations that we're working on, because then we've got one kind of on that far west end and one on the east end. Our hope is then is to, as a part of the compost program, that we're gonna probably reuse that. It won't be that particular material because it needs some more time to bake, but for the SQR program later in the year, we just, we were, we, we sat on that last pile pretty long the last time. So we're trying to put ourselves in a position to be able to load it up in semis and have it be part of the compost program faster than last time.
We're happy to charge you for hauling it away and then selling it back to you. It's our pleasure. No, but we are, that is a good model, a new model, and it, that we've only done a couple of times, but it will be for Clive and a couple of, there's four cities we will be sending our semis to, where it's gonna take your cities to, you know, a dump truck back and forth seven to eight times when I can take one semi out there and dump without you getting in traffic and all that. So it should be a huge help to those cities. Same theory in Greenfield. There'll be our semis going out.
Legal counsel?
Nothing.
Just a couple of items, your honor. Over the last weekend, Green Belt Music Festival was a success. They had great weather. No complaints heard either, no noise complaints. So I think that was a successful event. We'll have to circle back with those folks and kind of hear how things went financially. I know that the Clive Community Foundation had a table there and proceeds from each ticket. So very successful second year with that event. Also, kind of with the, in the Green Belt theme, we had a, a committee that consisted of city staff, the mayor, myself, representatives from our Parks Public Art Recreation Board and Clive Community Foundation members, and NCMIC, who gave the grant for public art for Green Belt Landing to select a potential public art piece for Green Belt Landing. So we have a lot of grant money from both Bravo and NCMIC and the Icon Bravo Grant as well, upwards of a quarter of a million dollars lined up for this art piece. It's, I think, the one that, I don't know the official, how all the, all the juring went in, but I know the ones that we were leaning towards is a pretty significant piece. So the public art consultant that we're working with on that will bring, is working on some contracts to bring back forward to the council, and we'll show you what, what those pieces are, but pretty excited about that. Just a reminder too, on June seventh, we'll have the Food Truck Friday Staff Appreciation Event, and I all have that on your calendars. Hopefully we'll have some good weather that night as well. The next Food Truck Friday, the week later, is the rain date for that. So on the fourteenth, if we do not have nice weather that night. Wanted to mention too, that last council meeting, we talked a little bit, I think it was last council meeting, yes, was, talked about the Alice's Road project in the roundabouts, or maybe that was two meetings ago. I, I attended when the city of Waukegan also talked about that, just to see their reactions to it. I think they've had some debates on their council related to roundabouts. They were generally supportive of the residential connections where the residential local roads were coming into the main four lane road of Alice's Road in that phase one. There was a little bit more hesitancy, more research, more understanding that they wanted to have from Snyder and Associates on the Douglas and Alice's Road, which again is not a part of this first phase that we're doing next, that we're looking to bid out and construct next year. That'll come in another phase, but so a little more work to do on that. There was just some hesitancy of some experiences they've had in their community. And so again, not, they weren't saying no, they just wanted more information. So just wanted to give the council an update on that.
Looks like Grimes is putting a massive one in on North James. It's gonna be a big.
Big one, yeah. That's, actually, we talked about, I think that was talked about in that meeting as a matter of fact.
Where at on James? At first?
James going, from our facility going north. It's right before the, the park there on your left.
That's First Street.
Tennis court.
James and First, okay.
Way, way before First.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. Back, past the park, going back south past that park. There's a big development going.
That's all I have, your honor, unless there's any questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Well, Matt did remind me, attended the first Food Truck Friday last week, and it was fantastic turnout, spectacular weather. It was perfect night. It was just a great event, and yeah, it's a great time by everyone. It was, it was wonderful.
Looks like the storm should, they're only supposed to be tomorrow morning, so we hopefully will, things will clear up for tomorrow night. So have a good night.
All right. Anything else for the Good Order? Any correspondence? We'll adjourn at seven forty. We'll adjourn at 7:49?